Hey, this is your girl Tasha, known to the world as the Tasha Carpenter. But everybody calls me your girl Tasha because when you hang with me, it's like you are hanging with your girl. And today in the studio guys, we is that election time going on. And we got a queen hanging in the store, in the studio YGT today. Ms. Belinda Queen, who's running for the school board. Y'all remember her, some of you guys fell in love with her the last time she was on the show. Those of you who are out of state and out of the country, like can't she come here and be a part of our school board? So Belinda Queen is back and I'm gonna let her just introduce herself to you guys.
Hi, hello, hello everybody. I am, I am so glad to be back here with your girl Latasha, my girl Latasha. I am Belinda Queen, I am a candidate for the school board. I made it through the primaries, I wanna just thank you, thank you, thank you each and every one of you who supported me through the primaries. So I will be on the ballot, I am on the ballot, a lot of you got the ballots in the mail already. So I need your vote. I need you to vote to put kids first for a change, I need you to vote for change. We can do this only together, we can make a difference. It takes a village and we are that village to make that difference.
Absolutely, so guys, it is that time to get in and start worrying about elections. In case you don't know, we gonna put it right out here from the start, okay? The general election is coming up. And early voting guys, it's October the 25th through November the 1st. And that goes on from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., that's 10 hours a day. It's eight days, that means you got 80 hours to go out and vote, okay? And then if you miss it then, you gotta come out on a regular day, which is for November the 6th. And you get out there 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., you got another 13 hours, okay? So guys, we got 93 hours to get out here and it's on the screen, rock the vote! I love that, that was so right on time, you know, everything was like aligned, okay? So look, so we gotta refresh some people memory about, about you. Of course, people want to know, why? Well, you know what? I remember I got the call from you before the primary election. And you were contemplating a couple of different positions to run for, okay? And you, you put up this post on your social media saying, hey, which po- which, which um, position do you think I'm more fit for? And a lot of people were saying that they thought you should run for delegate. But you decided to run for school board. So share with the viewers why you decided to run for school board.
Okay, so one of the reasons why I'm running for school board, for everybody who don't know me and for those who do, just to remind you, I am the mother of three, I am the stepmother of nine, I have 11 guardianship foster kids, and I have over 20 grandchildren. I'm a graduate of Prince George's County Public Schools and yes, I do love the children. Um, I see a lot that's going on right now in Prince George's County Public School system, but not only in the school system and society. And one of the things we have not been doing is putting kids first for a change. And as you saw and you'll see again when it comes through, when I'm running on, the slogan is to put kids first for a change. I think somewhere along and along, we forgot that they matter, they are the next generation and they are featured. And Latasha mentioned it, yeah, I was dating whether I was gonna run for county council or wait four more years for Derek E- Derek Leon Davis seat. Or whether I was gonna run for the seats, you know, because I knew Angela was coming out. And so whether I was gonna run for delegate, even though I knew Wala wanted to run for delegate and she was a good choice, so I thought about it and I put it on Facebook just to see, because I am a strong community activist and I wanted to see where the people felt like I was most needed. Because I am a servant by far. And so I wanted to see where my help could be most needed. So a lot of people kept saying to me, oh, run for delegate, run for county council, do this. But then it was brought to my attention by, um, you know, the Senator Melanie Griffin, she's the Senator elect. She said, Belinda, you know, you should do what you love the best. She said, you love the kids, you're always involved with the kids and so you should run for school board. And we all know, the Prince George's County Public Schools had a lot of issues going on. And I was like, okay, do you really wanna tackle them big issues, them big problems? They're not transparent, it seemed like a lot of people in here are just big liars. And I'm just put it out there because everybody know, I say what I say and I feel what I say. And it was just so much going on, did I really wanna be a part of a system that to me does not transparent, a person who believes in engaging and empowering and being open with the people, a person who believes in putting citizens first, a person who believing that my kids have to come first, the next generation's important. You know, people, I look at a system who actually had been robbing our babies, who've been taking from our babies and I'm a person, I would give my last dime, I would give my meal, you know, and to make sure that these kids are okay. And I'm looking at things that's going on in this system, do I wanna be a part of that? So I really thought about it and I asked a lot of people and it was said to me the same thing, you know, run for the school board. And it wasn't until Howard Stone said to me, he said, Belinda, what do you love? You always fighting for the kids, you always fighting for right, you should do what, you know, you love doing. And I thought about it, you know, so I say, okay, God, three people and more than said that to me, is that a sign? Has that what you've been actually grooming and training me for all my life? And, and then I realized that is, you know. I've learned a lot of things over life, you know, and I've shared a little bit more as we go on. And part of learning them things, I realized that my talent and my gift and my calling is to not only to run for school board, but my calling is so to protect our children. We have to worry about the next generation and we have to not only make sure that they're taken care of, but they're able to succeed and succeed in life. So that's one of the reasons why I choose to run for school board. I choose not only because I care, but I choose because we gotta make sure that that next generation not only succeed, but generations come will succeed also.
Alright now, y'all heard it right from the horse's mouth, she's, she's not a horse. Y'all heard it right from the queen's mouth, okay? So if you heard something, you heard definitely that she has a passion. So I guess right now, they need to know, what makes you qualify for this position? What type of things do you have within the community and politically or, or experience that you have that makes you qualified for running for this position? Because some people don't go on passion alone and that's what you need to do. Because those pol- those politicians, they know how to run that game on you already and say that they wanna do what they wanna do. Sometimes you need somebody with a real heart to be in here. But I, I propose to you guys that Ms. Queen is not just about a real heart, she's about experience too, so share with them your experience.
So you know, it's a saying you, you hear, especially if you've been in church, that some was called, some was sent, and some just got up and went. It is a calling, you heard me to say it. Um, I, I really believe it was something I was called to do, I believe it's my gift. And through using this gift, I believe it's my gift to use, not only that, to share. And if I don't use this gift, then I will be hurting not only myself, the next generation. So I'm saying that what has prepared me for that is the fact that I'm the mother of 21 kids and of five different generations. So if you got, you know, if you ever been a parent or auntie, whatever, you know that these kids that I'm raising now compared to my, you know, daughter that I raised from 1980 something and on, are completely different, okay? They are not the same type of children. And you would know that, so you know, my youngest child now is 16, even besides my grandkids, but it's a different generation, you know. At one time it was like, you know, you don't talk back, you do this. And now the kids, they voice their own opinion. And you some, you have to listen to it, it's a different generation. So I realized that, you know, I have been actually been called because I've been through generation of generation of generation of raising kids. And even through that, I've had a lot of training of doing that. And then I realized it started way back then with, you know, my first child going to the PTA meeting, being involved, being involved in the community, being involved in church. I was a Sunday school teacher, but most of all, which is more important, I've been a 4H leader for over 30 years. You know, and I believe, you know, 4H said hands hand health, you know, and heart. And that's what I have, I have the hands for greater service. You know, my head is for clear thinking and my heart definitely for greater loyalty, to serve, serve not only my country, but to serve the children. And that's what's so important and to serve the community. So as I realized, I've been doing all these things, I've been working with kids from a Sunday school teacher, from a 4H leader, from being a parent, who not only that would take not just my kids, but other kids in the community that would take in my home and I would take them places and let them experience different things. I realized that my calling was calling me not only to just to help them, but to understand the kids and understand the generation a little bit better. And it wasn't until the new generation I have now, Latasha, in my home, where right now the Lord has blessed me with some beautiful, beautiful, beautiful girls that I have in my home, but they have issues. They have big issues. Um, some of them have 504 plans, some of them bipolar, some of them have ADHD. And I was like, oh Lord, what in the world? Why did you bless me with these? But then I had to realize, as I stated, it's a calling. So part of that calling is how can I represent your child if I don't understand a child with issue? You know, so I can't just represent all the good kids, you know, because I raised all good kids. I have to represent every child, so that means the special child, the child with issues, the, you know, the bad kid, the child with the As and the Bs and then the one that just don't wanna listen. So I have been blessed to be able to experience all of that and have all of that in my household, the ones who wanna talk back, the ones who don't, the ones who wanna do what they wanna do. I, I've actually experienced that. So going through all of that, I realized that it has really prepared me. And even working through Verizon, being a communication free for years, it prepared me to be a communicator. But most important, being a part of the union has even helped me out with this position because now I know where union stands. So it's a lot that I can say that have prepared, prepared me, you know. It's not just the 4H, it's not just the church, it's not just the union, it's not just being a parent, it's a calling, as I said. And along the way, I have been prepared for this position and I am so ready to serve you guys. I'm so ready to not only be engaged and empowered, but to stand up, to speak up and to be the voice to represent your children.
Did y'all hear that? Stand up and speak up. That is what Belinda Queen does and everything she does. Like she says, she don't hold no cut cards. Your girl Tasha can speak to her, knows her personally, known her for years. Over two decades and I'm not gonna tell our age, okay? But over two decades, I have known her and known her passion. Even when it comes to going and sitting inside the schools and actually being principal for the day and all the other kinda stuff, who's crazy enough to do that but Belinda Queen and her calling?
And substitute for two years.
So yeah, she definitely has the experience when it comes to that. So um, Belinda, I remember that we were at a, like a civic meeting and you were kinda talking about um, mental health and things. When it deals with our kids and the trouble that they're having in school. Can you share with everybody a little bit your thoughts about what our kids are going through and where they, why they cannot come to school in some cases and be productive and what we need to do to fix that problem?
Yeah, so I think community schools, and I know community schools are definitely gonna help. Um, and we actually have been talking about that and addressing it, talking about going in. Because we do have a different generation, it is a lot of health issues going on in society, you know, that's going on amongst our children. We live in a society now that social media, the kids are seeing things, they're hearing things that we would never thought of seeing at our age, you know. And they're experiencing things, my five year old just knows so much. And even, you know, you give them these cell phone, but they're doing so much, some things you can actually say, well, I'm gonna protect them, but you can't protect them for everything. So mentally, they're seeing things and they're hearing things that we've never thought about seeing. So it is mental and social illness going on, then you have a lot of domestic violence. You have a lot of, and you know, in a lot of places where smoking is allowed. So these kids are inhaling things, inhaling the drugs and a whole lot of other stuff. Um, where, you know, kids are, and parents are drinking and you know where come some kids are drinking, the same thing even with guns. So so much going on with mental, mental illness that our, it is affecting our kids. It is really affecting us, taking them away from their childhood. And then even when we think about it, in a lot of schools, they don't even have recess, recess anymore. Um, not just even the schools, now when they go home, they go home and they in their TVs. When we went home, what, we had outdoors, we used to play, we knew our neighbors and we knew what was going on in the community. Your parents would, you know, not try to text you or call you, they would call you by yelling your name out. So everybody knew in your community who it is. But it's not like that, we're living in a different society. So we're, this society, which is, everybody know, the internet and social media and everything is great. The microwave society has been a lot better for a lot of people, but it's hurting us also. So we have to learn to adjust to this society. And adjusting to society, we have to learn to adjust to the mental illness that is causing our children. And we gotta make sure that every school has counselors in it. We gotta make sure that every child who's having an issue, someone is able just to talk to them and find out what's going on. Not get mad and throw them out the classroom because they're having a fit or they're going through something we don't even know what they're going through. And one of the things I've been sharing, because I've been doing a lot of training, thank God for the training I've been getting as a foster parent, as a guardianship. And I'm telling you, it has made me better. I just think all parents need a lot more training when it comes to the kids, especially of this generation, because you know, they didn't come with a book. We all know they didn't come with a book. But they, but they did come with the, the fact that we should be giving them love. A lot more love. And you know, as I went to see Kevin Hart movie last night, Night School, and I'm telling you guys, I'm throwing this plug in, everybody need to go see it. It was so much laughter and so much fun, that I need to see it again because toward the end of the movie, he threw out how his father talked so much negative to him and told him he wasn't gonna be anything, told him he was gonna be stupid and da da da. And how that hurt him. And that's the same thing some of your children are going through. We, you know, you may be mad, but then you say things to them and we don't realize, we're scarring these children. If we don't say positive things in their life, if we don't invest in them, it doesn't even matter what problems they have, how slow with mental illness. But we have to encourage them, because every child can do something, every person can do something. Some of us had issues growing up, but we have to invest in us. We gotta realize that it is a job for everybody out here. It is something and a part that everyone plays in being a part of society. And we gotta stop hurting them and start investing in them and start having programs and helping them get through the mental illness. And I was gonna say earlier, one of the classes I took, and I'm gonna break it down to this and less than a minute, the lady said, think of something that happened to you, a tragedy that happened to you young. And I thought of a tragedy that happened to me, something that you was like, oh my God, and it affected you for a long time and you just couldn't get over it. But as you got older, you got over it because you were older. You know, you're older, you learnt a little bit forgiveness, whether you went to school or whether you went to church. But somehow you learnt about forgiving a little bit more. But children are still children, they don't understand that. They hold on to tragedy a little longer. So now they going to school and that tragedy is in their book bag. So when they see domestic violence or they see their parent being beat or they see the drugs going on, or they're being hit, or they going to school being hungry and not being able to have things, or they're being caught names and they've been bullied. And all the things that going on with them and they're having to hold it in. They are a child, they are children. And we expect them as children to continue to hold all that in. When adults, we have a hard time holding it ourselves. So that's one of the biggest issues that we have that's going on.
Alright now, I see in the chat guys, remember, we wanna ask you to share and invite, share and invite definitely. Remember that we are taking phone calls, you can dial in on 301-429-9247. I see that Mr. Edward Barrows has just joined the chat and came in. So that'll prompt my question too with um, your thoughts about the fact that there is a board that's already there, that's established. What are your plans to go in? Because of course, even we know the board itself right now is like divided, okay? So what is it that Belinda's gonna be able to bring to the table? And how do you think that you could contribute anything to try to mend or bring a mutual agreement amongst the parties? So that instead of us being at each other's throats, that we have the, the um, the kid, putting the kids first, put the kids first. What is it that you can do to, to make it work more, more cohesively for the benefit of the children?
Um, on the way over here, it was a car next to me and I love it. I have the signs on the side of my car and people always stopping and looking. So I, you know, always want my window down and talk to them. And so it was a young man in the car, he said, are you really gonna put the kids first? And I said, you can bet it. And so I just started talking to him. And people really wonder about that, because you guys don't realize, but we haven't been putting the kids first. A lot of you have been thinking about yourself, not thinking about the next generation. Even a lot of our elected officials and Tasha just told you, I'm gonna say what I wanna say and I feel what I say and I just don't hold no cut cards. It's about you and pocketing your money, but you haven't been thinking about the next generation. You making a salary, you, you salary you making and decisions you making, you aren't thinking about your neighbors and your future and your future children and the future generation, you're thinking about self right now. But thinking about self right now is hurting generations to come. Because believe it or not, you may live in your big houses and you may be comfortable with the salaries and the decision you making now, but them decisions are affecting the next generation. One of the things that you talked about, the school board is going on, a lot of people have their little words and their little sayings about Mr. Barrows and you said online. But I love Edward Barrows because he's just like my children, he say what he wants to say. He feels he's gonna tell it and that's what they do, people do that. The children of this generation do that. We have taught them to do that. He went to Prince George's County Public Schools and I'm gonna tell you guys, one day when my kids started coming home to me and started questioning me and I'd be like, what did I just say? And when my daughter said to me, well, my teacher said that when we don't agree with somebody, we need to, you know, tell you how we feel and question you and say why. So if we taught them to do that, how dare we question them now from a school system who has taught them to question things? So I, I, you know, I applaud him for speaking out on some things. I know people feel like back in the day, you kept everything, you swept everything, you know, what happened at home, stays at home. It doesn't work anymore, first of all, it's not at home. This is taxpayer dollars. Taxpayers need to know what's going on in the school system. Not only that, it's not at home because my kids and other people's kids are affected about it. People live in a community of school system, they wanna know what's going. If it's mold and mildew in the school system that's in my community, I don't wanna find out about the news. I don't want you sweeping it under the carpet, I wanna know what's going on. If my grandkids and kids are in that school, I wanna know what's going. Give me the option or choice to move my kids, to pay for them to go somewhere else or to find out what I can do to help your school system. But by hiding things, you're not even giving anybody opportunity to help you because you're hiding, you're being secretive. So I have to say, it's a lot of things that's going on with the board, we have to work with. And one of the things is to stop being mean to the younger generation because they tell everything. And then some of the ones that have been there for years, because I know the person I'm running to, um, running against that, which she has, she's been there for eight years, but I didn't realize that she was the longest board member that's on the board right now. Um, when you think of eight years, that we have to realize things have changed. You know, and we have to be about change, we have to be very diverse. And you know that working through Verizon, when they showed us who moved my cheese, we have to realize that generations are changing and we have to stop expecting things to be like when we grew up. And we have to realize that our kids don't want the same thing that we had. And I had to realize when I was growing up, I wanted to pick the fence, I wanted the houses, I wanted what I saw Bill Cosby, these kids don't even want that, they Uber, they lift, they don't wanna cut your grass, they don't wanna have their own grass, they wanna go in and out. Generations have changed, so we have to stop trying to teach and force things on our decisions of what we want for Prince George's County. Because we aren't gonna be Prince George's County, our kids in the next generation are gonna be a part of Prince George's County. A lot of us are gonna be history, we're gonna be gone, we're gonna be rest in peace somewhere. So stop making decisions for a generation that don't want your decisions.
That's right, cuz we gotta pass the torch on, you gotta pass the torch on. So on your website, and it's on the screen, votebelindaqueen.com, you have several promises that are posted on the website. Um, if you could just like give me a rundown of maybe like your top four things that you look forward to when you complete your next term, that you're gonna be able to say that you accomplished and how you're gonna make those things happen. And notice I said, when you could, when you, one moment. Hanging with your girl Tasha, who's calling and where are you calling from?
How you doing? This is Derrick Terry calling, actually from Charles County.
Hello Derrick Terry.
How you doing? Hold on, I got it on delay.
Okay, he is an educator too, over in Charles County. What do you have for Mrs. Queen?
Uh, I basically just wanted to commend uh, Ms. Queen on her being very responsive. I'm not a Prince George's County voter, but I posed a question to her and she said she would look into it, and she didn't have to. And, and she did, and I definitely appreciate her for doing that because, and this is mainly for Prince George's County voters. I think when you have a person who's a candidate, and I don't even think she even knew whether or not I was a voter or not, but she took the question seriously. And she looked into it. Now regardless of my agree or disagree, that's irrelevant, but the fact that she took the time to actually respond really shows a lot about her character and I just wanna say, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so very much.
We appreciate you calling in too Derrick, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so what are your various promises that you have on your website? Back again posing a question. Give me uh, about four that again, when you complete your term, that you're gonna be able to reflect back on, be like, yeah, I did this.
Yeah, and, and as I give you that and putting kids first for a change, I'm gonna say that. But even to say what Derrick said, it doesn't matter. I may be running for school board in District 6, but I'm running to serve the whole Prince George's County. And even though he said he was in Charles County, we gotta remember, our school systems affect each other. So if it's something that we, I can do as a servant, I'm gonna try to help you. It doesn't matter where you are, through Prince George's County, through Charles County, through the Washington DC. As a servant, I'm gonna do that. So thank you again Derrick, I appreciate you calling in. So I'm running on putting kids first for a change. And first of all, the main thing is, we all heard about the teacher salary in Prince George's County. We already know we're losing a lot of teachers through the neighbor, neighborhood jurisdictions like DC and probably even Charles County. Um, we gotta find funds to retain our skilled teachers, we have some great teachers. I always say, the person who have made an impact in my life was Ms. Hattie Saunders, who taught me at Northwestern High School, and she was a teacher. And I'm gonna tell you how, you guys, she was my accounting teacher, something that we don't even teach anymore in schools. And we really need a lot more of that in every school. Accounting is need to be taught so these kids can know how to control their financing. But since I've learned that and since she stayed on me with learning that and make sure I did, I have been able to survive because I know accounting, I can do taxes, I can do whatever I wanna do to survive. But one thing for sure, I know how to make money because of that. But it was a teacher who affected me. And most of you would say the same things no matter what, whether it was a Sunday school teacher, 4H leader, community, it was a teacher that made some type of impact on your life.
I'm sorry baby, you popular.
That's okay.
Hanging with your girl Tasha, who's calling and where are you calling from?
This is Joseph calling, Tasha from Capitol Heights.
Hello Joseph, what do you have for Mrs. Queen?
Question, I'm concerned about the vocational training. Um, what could she do about putting more vocational training in the schools?
Okay, so um, Joseph, I'm concerned about it too. Um, that's one of the reasons why I'm running and actually trying to help unions also. Because what, what I look at is, and be honest with you, when I graduated from Northwestern in 1980, I went to college, okay? I went to college for like six months and I was like, no, this is not working. I leave out my mother's house. That was not working for me. So I decided to take a trade. So I went to a vocational training school for six months. And I'm telling you, that was the best thing. After I went to that vocational training school, my mom's would tell you, I know she's gonna listen to this interview, I kept getting all types of calls for jobs and I didn't want them. But my mom said to me, oh, you gonna take that next job, you gonna do something. So I did, and that next call was Verizon, and I worked for 28 years.
No it wasn't, she, she just, when y'all do fact check, y'all gonna get a wrong thing, it was C and P.
C and P, okay, C and P. C and P, Bell Atlantic, Verizon, same thing. It was C and P and I worked for 28 years for that company. So I really believe that vocational training school is really good because everybody is not college material. Even though I went back to school, but guess what? Bell Atlantic paid for my schooling, you know? So I just believe that vocational is good for some people. And I had, I have some kids in my house who doesn't wanna go to college. And now I'm trying to get them in some type of trade school to realize that they need to do something because everybody is not college material.
So with what Joseph asking, do you have any ideas about how you would get that to push out more?
One of the things that we gotta be so more supportive of having the unions and trades to work within the school system, um, to be able to come and offer these programs to the children. And one of the biggest problems I have is our schools, they say a lot of issues are going on with the school system falling apart. Well, we have unions that do heating, that do air conditioning, that do painting. If we had a partnership, if we had a partnership with these unions, some of our children can be trained right there at their own schools. So we gotta start thinking outside the box. We gotta, we gotta be diverse and we gotta be creative thinkers, even on the school board. But not only that, within our county, we gotta start realizing that we gotta use what we have in Prince George's County. I went to the union facility over in Atlanta and oh my God, they have a beautiful school there. They have everything there, I mean, everything you need from the desk.
All the monitors.
Yes. So why, and you know, so and we're talking about not only just building more schools, educate, we can use some of their facilities if we learn to collaborate. The big word is collaborating, partnership. Not only with unions, with businesses, with nonprofits, all of that is very important.
Alright now, alright, so before we get another call, you.
Okay, so we said find funds to retain the skilled teachers, then we gonna invest. Invest in innovative teaching technologies and strategies. We talked about that earlier, about my five year old, things have changed. And you guys, when I was growing up, I saw the Jets and I'm telling my age and back, you know, the Jets and everything was computer, you pushing, you seeing everything. And we're a little bit slow because in our, obviously we want our parents to be involved, but we gotta update technology. We gotta make sure that the schools are so updated that our kids will not only be productive, that they would also be able to compete with other countries and other counties. So we gotta invest a little bit more. And then we gotta sustain, you know, we have to actually sustain with other countries and other counties. So we got to invest a little bit more. And then we got to sustain, you know, we have to actually sustain some of the things that we have within Prince George's County, raise the standards, you know, so students can achieve a little bit more. Not only achieving education, but achieving jobs, achieving careers, achieving life. Um, so we have to raise some of the standards in the way that actually we're graduating people and the ways that we have programs and the ways that, just like we said, you have to raise the standards in Prince George's County and realize that we have to not only collaborate, but make sure we have programs that's very diverse for every child. Um, I think one of my children always said to me, I'm not like my sister, you know, I'm different. And we got to realize each child is different. You know, you may have a child that's going to want to go to college, would have, but then you might have another one that don't want to go to college, it's not college material. Then you have some that want to go to military. So we have to realize, we have to be diverse and have different standards. And then we have to support the kids, which is very important in the home environment. We have to realize that each home is different. Some homes are going to have two parents in them. Some are going to have single parents. Some kids are going to be going home with no parents. They're going to be raising their sisters and brothers. So we have to realize that we have to support, it takes a village, so we have to support the students in the home. And we have to realize that every child. Our state's attorney said it the other day, Angela Austin Brook, um, I was at a event that she had. And one of the things she, she said and which is, it was so good to hear it out of her mouth, that she said she was at the school. I think it was Judge Savannah Woods, and she said she saw a student, she looked and she saw that student, and the student didn't look like they were well off. She said, but you know, the, the student cared herself like, like she was well off. It didn't matter that she didn't have much. She still had her dignity within side of her. And the little girl was smart. And what she said is she said, that child deserves a quality education. Just like the child who parents may have money and they may dress well off. So we have to realize that every child deserve, if they want it, they deserve a quality education, a quality school. And we got to make sure if a child wanted, that we give it to them. And that's so very important. And then last but not least, we got to be transparent. And we talked about that earlier. We got to start talking and telling and letting know what's going on. Stop sticking on it, everything under the rug. Hiding it, not letting us know where's this money being spent, spent at, because it definitely ain't so much in every pupil, because I don't see my pupils getting the money that we got to be a little bit more transparent, because we don't know, maybe the money is being spent right. I don't know, but if it is, let me know. You know, so it's very important, you know, that we be a little bit more transparent and let everybody know really what's going on with that one point eight billion dollars. Because I can't wait to get in there and dissect that budget.
Speaking of money, MGM. So what's about the whole thing with the gambling money?
Okay, so that was a big issue. And I can only tell you a little bit what I do know about it. I, you know, I encourage people to vote against it. I know people really wanted the MGM. People like the gamble. I'm not going to lie, I like to go to Vegas. I love Vegas, but I just didn't want Vegas here, Prince George's County. But it's here because a lot of people want it. Um, a lot of people really voted for it because they really thought that it's going to take from their them having their taxes going up and the money was going to go for the school system. But what they really didn't realize is that money go into a big pot. And that big pot is divided among all over, you know, all other school systems. So that's one of the biggest issues we do have with MGM. And it's not just for Prince George's County, it's for the state of Maryland. So it is going to be a lockbox that's going to be on the ballot and asking people to actually definitely vote for it. That you vote so that the money can actually be spent for constructions of new schools only. So that's very important that you pay attention to them questions on that ballot. So that will make sure that when money is given, it's not diverted anywhere else from the casinos, but it's only going for school systems. So that's very important that you pay attention. And we have to do that. Pay attention in what we are voting for.
So, do not treat your ballot like you treat that terms and agreement when you get your little iPhone updated. Or, or any of, or any of those things that go on, you know, you just, you don't read it. You just click yes, I agree. Don't do that with your ballot, guys. Get out there, find some information. Find an official, official ballot to read in advance and comprehend what it is that you're voting on. That's so important. That's part of you being an educated and responsible voter. Okay, now when you talked about the whole thing with, um, with, um, children that deserve something, made me think about the fact a lot of you guys know that my mini me just went off to college. And actually, what was impressive is that she's going to a PWI. She didn't go to HBCU. Um, she got accepted into Oklahoma Christian University. And at the last minute, we went after seeing if we could get her into the honor school. Well, based on test scores, Trinity would not be qualified to be in the honor school. But what happened is that the guy gave her an interview over the phone. And he said, wait a minute, I don't care what your school is. You need to be in my program. And she in there kicking that, kicking busts and taking names right now. I'm going to tell you that right now. They all are doing stuff, even to the point that even with her orchestra, um, chamber orchestra, she's one of two blacks in the orchestra. She went in, she took first tier violin. And they decided, they said, we need you. They're paying for that extra class. She's over her full course. They're paying for that extra castle. Yeah, so if a child wants in the habit, all this stuff about testing, sometimes testing is not good. Testing is not good. So absolutely.
I definitely agree with you. Every child, we, we talked about it. We have to be diverse and realize people are different. Some people may be good at doing tests and some people are not. So we have to realize that we have to take each and every student on their own, what they're good at. Because maybe they're not good at testing, but maybe they're good at other things. You have to see each person for what they are. And she could have lost out, really, if they just went by her test score. And we make mistakes. We lose a lot of good quality people because we're worried about test scores. Test scores is not it. What can they do? What can they achieve? And what can they show you? And that's what it's all about.
Now before, before we go to the commercial, I have two questions coming in from the chat session, because guys, we do have another, um, guest that's going to be joining us at the request of Ms. Queen to talk about something that's very, um, serious. But while we're there, let me get these two. We got three questions. Well, let me pick one. One is how can the church be enlisted to help with this, with the situation without kids?
Oh, I think it's very important. My community leaders, the Andrews, always talk about it. They said that, you know, if, if the churches would get involved, that they would see what's going on when it comes to their students, because churches have a lot of the churches, especially our mega church, you have a lot of kids and they go to the Prince George's County, whether it's public school, whether it's private school, they're part of a school. And if we would take more time and invest ourselves in helping this tru, the school system and just growing up and volunteering, and maybe the ministers, whether it's the youth minister, whether the pastors can every now and then visit. I think you will find that the students will act a little different. I know when my parents came in or a person in the neighborhood, or my pastor, or sister so-and-so came to my school, I knew how to act a little bit better than what I would, you know, act. Because I knew that they wasn't playing.
She said a little bit better.
Because I wasn't trying to get pinched. I got, you know, I, back in my days, we got pinched. It was okay to get pinched. So I knew how to act a little bit better. You know, so I think it's very important that churches do get involved, um, on, on that level.
Okay, two more. How can the public better hold their officials accountable?
I think the public can better hold their officials accountable, but make sure they elect quality, quality people, people who are community service. I don't think we need to elect people who don't come out, who, who don't talk for you. How can they vote for you if they really don't know what you need? Um, stop electing people because you get something in the mail and it's telling you to vote for this person, this person. Have you ever seen this person, that person out in the community? Did you look, as Tasha said, did you look and Google and see what this person has actually really done? Is this person making decisions for you and your community? Decisions that they want to make, or are they making decisions for the next generation because it's going to be better? I think we really have to hold them accountable. And then we need to watch them. A lot of, I mean, the school board, your politician, everything is online, you know, social media has, you know, technology. So go online and watch some of them. You will find that a lot of them are not voting the way you think them are voting. They're, they come out to your meetings and they say this and that. But if you check the way they vote, they have not voted the way you wanted them to vote. A lot of them, you would not have voted back in the office this time if you knew how they were voting. So I'm telling you, I'm holding you guys accountable. Find out what's going on for who's elected. And another big thing, and I'm going to say this real quick, some of you don't even know who represents you. Start educating yourself. Sometimes we go out to meetings and we ask people, well, who is your senator? Who is your council member? I don't know. Come on guys, you got to know, they're making major decisions for your roads. They're making major decisions. They, they making decisions where they passing bills and they passing laws. And these bills and laws are affecting you and your family and the next generation. Know who represents you.
Let's act like shit, the poetry thing. Hold on, we got to get some snaps on that. Um, one more question before we go to break. Besides pay, what do you feel is the major reason why PGCPS has a major teacher retention issue?
Okay, well, I would say pay is one. And then I would have to say is all of these tests, you know, that has been required upon them. Um, it's really kind of hard. And then the morale. Um, we know, if, if the morale is not good, you're not going to stay somewhere where you're not happy. These are teachers. You can get a teacher job. And you can go from school to school for teacher job. But the morale, I mean, I know you got to be invested. I think it's very important. You got to be invested in doing. If you have a calling, that calling, you got to care. A lot of teachers stay because they do have a calling and they do care. And they want to stay a little close to home. But when you think about the new generation, and I want us to be honest, we're thinking about a younger generation that, uh, they're just starting, you guys. They're just starting out. They're young teachers. Um, they're starting in new families. They want to have new homes. They want to do things. Pay is very important to them. So you have to realize that's very important now, because now they want houses and they want cars and they want families. And you talking about paying them pennies on a dollar. They talking about surviving. This generation don't look at money as we look at money. Okay, this generation don't understand what we understand, because being honest, we don't teach this generation like we were taught. We were taught where we came from. And that's why we know where we going. This generation wasn't taught where they came from. They don't realize that people have died. People have got locked up. People were beaten just so they can have the quality education they have. They don't understand it. So they can wear the clothes and the shoes and live where they live at. A lot of people gave up a lot. Some of you still don't even share that. You got your kids really thinking that you, you just came in here and had it all. You really not telling what actually happened to your parents beforehand. I'm going to be honest with you. Me, we were, we were raised up in a two bedroom apartment. It was five kids. My mother in one room and all five of us in another. And now we're all doing well. And I always tell my kids every now and then, let me tell you something. I ain't have it that way. I had to share with my sister and them. You ain't always going to have it, you know, even though they do have it. But we have to really be honest and let the generations know that it ain't always been this way. Somebody died so you can get where you are today. So it's up to you now to take the torch, just like you said now, to pass the torch on and do good. So you can represent the next generation. So that's what's important.
All right, guys. So we're going to take a quick break. And when we come back on the flip side, we'll have a third person in the room with us. And you want to be here. Stay tuned. Stay tuned. Sharing a bite, sharing a bite, sharing a bite.
Tracy and Sharon shopped at the mall with friends on a beautiful Saturday afternoon.
I have to use the bathroom. Can't you hold it until you get home? Public restrooms are nasty. I know, but I can't wait.
Sharon dashed to the bathroom to find a dirty seat. No toilet tissue, no soap, and no other options. Frustrated, she screamed.
There's no toilet paper.
This sounds like a job for TRK man. Protect your bottom.
TRK man arrived just in the nick of time. He supplied Tracy and Sharon with the restroom kit. The restroom kit contained a patented oversized toilet seat cover, three feet of toilet tissue, and lightly scented hand and tush wipes. Sharon's frustration went away. She found comfort as she relieved herself and she strolled from the restroom feeling great. You too can overcome the hassle of poorly equipped restrooms while traveling, camping, or anywhere there are public facilities. Go to therestroomkit.com or call eight hundred five eight one forty one eighty one to purchase now.
Protect your bottom.
The restroom kit is a small business founded by an American veteran. For wholesale opportunities, email info at therestroomkit.com.
Welcome. Welcome back to hanging with your girl Tasha. We're back in the studio, guys, okay? Having a little bit of seeing with my eyes, camera issues, but that's all right. As y'all see, we have a third person in the studio and I'm going to allow her to introduce herself to you.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Crystal Orietta. Um, I'm excited to be here to talk about the school prison pipeline. And I'm the ARROZ's campaign coordinator, which is Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools. And also the communications director for HTRAP Human Resources Achievement Program. And our main mission is to break the school prison pipeline.
Okay, so for some people, this, this is probably their first time that they're even going to hear the, um, term, school to prison pipeline. Now, can you explain a little bit about what exactly it involves?
Yeah, so the school prison pipeline is born from the thought and the process where we see, instead of schools being a place where we're actually teaching our children a trade or te, preparing them for college. It is used as a holding cell that's preparing them for prison. And it's something that's systematic. It's something that we can track with numbers and figures, even when we look at test scores. So instead of using test scores to say, well, we need five more math tutors. Or we need, um, extra English classes, because their reading proficiency is not at the right level. Instead, we're using test scores to actually determine how many prisons and juvenile detention centers we're building in predominantly black and brown communities of lower economic status.
Okay, and some of this also deals with the whole thing about zero tolerance when it comes to discipline.
Right.
Now, do, can you give a, a brief summary of the history of that, how that started and how it's now evolutionized?
Right, so the whole zero tolerance phenomenon, to me, is yielding to what we see is now the school prison pipeline. So you have children being suspended and then expelled for minor infractions. And usually, again, it's something that is instilled and used in predominantly black and brown and lower economic status. When you look at the type of schools, more private schools and charter schools or more affluent areas would not see children being expelled and suspended for the same infractions at the same rate as you do here in Prince George's County, for example. We have the highest suspension rate in the state, more than Baltimore. We had, I think, over six hundred um, children suspended. And we look at the types of things kids can get even locked up for in the sense of in handcuffs and dragged out of the classroom. Um, something as having perfume out and refusing to put it back or, um, talking back. Now, we're looking at kids not saying you want your kids to talk back, not saying they shouldn't listen the first time, but no one would want their child in handcuffs in the back of a police car. Um, being taught at like as young as an elementary handcuffed, handcuffing children for small infractions. And that just creates this negative relationship with the police department. And it gets them prepared and ready, say, in, in a viewpoint, that anything we do is warranted that type of reaction. And I think that is when you look at the zero tolerance and how we really need to move away from suspension and more to restorative justice.
Okay, so what, what type of things, that's why I was going to ask that question, you know, what kind of alternatives, is there anything that is an alternative? What exactly is restorative ju, um?
Justice. Right, so, so restorative justice is something you even see on the adult level, right? Even with some prisoners now, if they commit a crime, you're not looking at just, okay, we're going to put you in jail, but we're saying, how do we connect you with the victim or connect you in a way that you can restore whatever you've done. So it's a practice that you use with adults. And we're saying we should start this at a younger age. So you look at, the teacher doesn't just go to the punishment. Um, and it's harsh, but it's not even connected to what they did. And so when you look at restorative justice, it's a way in which, look at suspending the child. So you're saying, okay, you're talking in class. So now we're going to suspend you, but you're out of the classroom and you're not even learning anything. So is that really helping you? But if restorative justice and they weren't paying attention in class, you have a conversation with them afterwards. Maybe the punishment is like something that's tied to extra credit or helping the teacher planning their, um, class. And sometimes even teaching a segment of the class. So it's a punishment in the sense, but they're learning and it's tied to whatever it is that they did. But it doesn't take them out of the classroom. It doesn't take them weeks from not learning. And so it's a way to teach responsibility, to still have consequences, to have the teacher have a better relationship with the child. They take time to dive deeper into why were they acting up in the classroom, not just instantly sending them to the principal's office. So we have a pilot program now in Prince George's County where they actually have implemented restorative justice programs. But we would like to see it implemented across the board.
Okay, so we have a question coming from the chat that says, is it possible that this is an offshoot of the FBI's counterintelligence program implemented by J. Edgar Hoover back in the sixties?
I don't know if I would say like. I don't know if I would say like that is the root of where we are now. But what I will say is I do believe it is systematic. I do believe that it's institutional and it's purposeful and it's premeditated. Um, if you haven't seen uh Thirteenth, I tell people to watch it. Um, because it just talks about how the prison system is industrial and they decided who was going to be a part of that system. And it's black and brown people of lower economic status. And so what they're doing is preparing us at a young age. Cause now the prison system is for profit. So now it's how many beds can we fill? Cause we need people. So now they're just preparing generations for prison and writing policies that yield young people to prison. If we look at even Maryland, we have the highest rate of children that could be charged as an adult. I mean, we have over thirty crimes where they can automatically bump you to an ad- adult and you're in prison and not juvenile detention.
Okay, so when you come from the schools, how does the whole thing with the school and the discipline? Because my understanding is when the zero tolerance thing began back in the day. Um, it was all about how the media was saying it was a bad proportion of a issue with school safety. Particularly, it started out with guns, then it migrated from guns to uh what um val- violent um violence is that it does not involve guns and also drugs and things like that. So when it comes to the discipline and stuff that's going on in the school, if it doesn't get to the point that you have a resource officer or a police officer that taking the child off. How does that all connect with going from school and moving our children into the criminal justice system?
I think there's a couple of factors we have to take in. Yes, one of the factors is the relationship you have with police officers in the school. Then the second part, I think, is the school system failing to prepare our children properly. And when you look at how children are not in school anymore, right? Cause there's no community in the sense of schooling. And you see more kids on the street and that lack of a relationship, I think that's part of it. I think it's not as black as and white as the fact that, you know, it's the teacher's relationship and the student. I think it's the whole entire culture. We no longer have a culture that values education the way it should. And I think that when we look at school, it's the number one place our kids spend all day, or they should be spending all day, right? And then you look at extracurricular activities, programs where schools do have sports and free music and choir and arts. And places where their kids can go, less likely are they to be on the street. When you have programs in neighborhoods that do not offer those type of programs for free, you're more likely to get in trouble. So it's so much more than that and it's so minute that sometimes I think we miss it. Because we're thinking, well, they're only at school for a few hours and they leave and go home. How is that a School of Prison Pipeline? But we're forgetting that this is usually the number one lifeline of the child when the parent is out at work trying to make a living. It's their relationship that they have with the teachers and it's what they're doing with their time when they're in that environment. And that is, I think, what we're lacking right now.
So it may not be direct, but the fact is that the discipline or a child that is disciplined once or multiple times has more of a likelihood to be a person that's found in the criminal justice system.
Right. Can I just add something? And and I'm just gonna share from my own personal, even last year with my girls that I have in the household. Um, what getting too little arguments with other girls at school. We don't have the peer mediation that we would have. And so they will get suspended for weeks, three days to a week, you know, and and I was like, okay, well, with no fighting, what's going on? What is school? It's div- it's disrupt disrupt the school.
Right.
Come on now, you sending these girls home for three to five days because they were arguing? You know, we did that as kids back in the day. We got over it or you had peer mediation to handle it. But you send them home now and you call it disrupting the class or disrupting the school, so you have to send them home? You're not getting the education. It's sad that you're doing that, but yet, I'm gonna be honest, I have a child now that's in school that don't even have a geometry teacher. And school has started since when? September? And she has not had a geometry teacher?
Right.
But you wanna send kids home for disrupting? Well, you're disrupting my child education. So let's be realistic, you know? She's missing a geometry teacher at Central High School. So how many students that have substitute teachers that have been substituting all year? And you've been disrupting. Do you get to be sent home? So we have to really change the way we're doing things.
And then, cause there's no really diversion program. When you think about, okay, we're just sending you home. Okay. What did they learn? What's the changed behavior? You're not actually taking an active role to actually change the child's behavior. And that's the key that's missing. It's more than, okay, go home, then come back. And then that's it. Then go home and then come back. There's no, okay, well, maybe we're gonna try um channeling that energy into a sport. Or maybe we're gonna see if they're interested in art, or maybe they need a mentor. Or maybe they're actually disrupting class because they're dyslexic and they can't read and they feel like, you know, if they act out, no one will see this. And those are the things that I think that we're missing. And if we take more of a community school approach to learning, we can fix that.
So with and comes to restorative justice, and I wanna point out to you guys that Belinda felt that this pris- the School of the Prison Pipeline was so important that she gave pu- a part of her hour that she paid in order to have K O, Crystal, come in here and discuss this with you guys. But with that, restorative justice also could be a part of it, could be having parents involved. So Belinda, how do you propose that when you get into your position, that you're gonna amend that that um break between the parents and the teachers and the children that's going on?
I I I really think that we have to realize if we don't invest now, that we're gonna pay later. And I say that, that's for generations to come. And I just don't, it just doesn't go for parents. Um, one of the biggest issue I have in campaigning or getting voters to vote is when I go out and I door knock and people say to me, well, I don't have any kids in the school. And I'm looking at them like, it doesn't matter. I still need your vote. Because guess what? The kids that are in school are gonna be your next doctors, your next lawyers, your next teachers, preachers. They may be a person that's doing your social security check and you may not get a check. So we gotta stop saying that we don't vote for school board because we don't have kids in school. They are our next generation. So it is very important that we handle this and take it. And some of them may have issues right now. But I thought that it is very important because I look at the kids that I'm raising. I told you, my foster parent have goddamn chip of kids and yes, some of these kids had issues. But I thought it took it upon myself, it takes a village and I'm part of that village to make sure I invest in them kids. And I am investing in them girls. And anybody who have told you that have known them from when they was in elementary school, they are definitely maturing and they're not the same kids. And as they get older, they're gonna be even better. But to me, if I didn't take time to invest in them, they could have been in the School of the Prison Pipeline. And I just think about it, you know, for people like me, I'm retired. So I've been retired last for ten years. I've been able to retire and now have to go back to work. But what if I was that parent and you suspend my child? I got two girls at home because they were disrupting the class. And they at home for weeks at a time and no no adult supervision. You know, what could have been going on? What could have been happening? Everybody is not that blessed, you know? All of these kids are not blessed to have someone at home to be able to do these things. We gotta realize that, as you said, it takes a village. And Latasha asked that question. We have to realize that some parents, they do have busy schedules. Some parents are working two and three jobs. Some can do it and just don't because they have no interest and let's be realistic. But it takes all of us because it is people out here just like us. Because I know you girls who really care, who want to. And one of my biggest issue, we had a community forum the other day and I said, we gotta be a little more open and make it a little more easier. We got grandparents and we got sisters and neighbors who want to, but they can't go in the school system. And then my person who are running against say, well, you know, we do have an open policy. They can volunteer. But I'm gonna be honest, some of them don't have that fifty-five dollars. I live in District Six, Capitalize, Disright, Seafleson. It's some of my district. Guess what? Most of them kids on free and reduced lunch. You know, my grandkid go to a Title I school where all of the kids are getting free and reduced lunch because of the area. And so listen to them grandparents, they don't have the money. More or less, they only have transportation to get to Upper Marlboro. So we gotta change way. And I look at volunteer, if I give you two or three hours of my time, you can at least give me a free pass to get in. Pay that fifty-five dollars so I can get the fingerprints.
Hello, you got somebody saying amen. Bill Massey says amen in the chat.
Yeah.
You taking them to church. Now, um, we probably have just about a couple of minutes going on. There was two questions that I wanted to ask you, but you are so long-winded.
I'm sorry.
And you said K O. It's okay, you're passionate. You said K O could talk, but I'm sorry. That's what she said. K O gonna come in here. She could talk. She could talk too. So look, I could talk too. Okay, so just touch real quick, cause you talked about how unions could come in and fix up our school and stuff. What are your ideas for addressing the um overcrowding and outdated schools?
And I think that would be the idea. Collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. It takes a village. It takes the community. We gotta work together. We gotta work together with union and businesses, nonprofit churches. Somebody asked that question. Come on, someone make a major churches have money. We gotta collaborate and we gotta work together with all of them. So it's very important that we collab, even businesses, cause some of them are gonna be working a business. Let's learn and work together.
And the last question is, what do you wanna say to our viewers who are voters and who are also non-voters?
I I think I said it, you know, early voting is coming. Get out and vote. Vote for school board. It's very important that we vote for the school board. It's very important that we vote. You know, somebody, I said earlier, they fought and they died for your right to vote. Let's vote for change. And if you want to go to my website, I can use you at the poll. I can use your early voting. I'm trying to beat the encompass. She been in there for a while. It is time for change, you guys. Eight years are too long. Things have changed. I need your help.
All right, so remember, October twenty-fifth to November first, ten AM to eight AM, eighty hours your opportunity to vote. And if you miss it there, you got another thirteen hours on November sixth from seven AM to eight PM, guys. Get out there and rock the vote. See you again next week.
Kids first, kids first.
Kids first, kids first. Next Monday, hanging with your girl Tasha. Bye.